Bergsog Superintendent-elect.
Holly Durlow-Babcock Chair.
Rob Mann School Board Hollis.
Great. All right, so let me just pull up my outline if you don't mind. I don't have anything printed. So, are there any agenda adjustments that I need to be aware of?
There are none.
Okay, so at this point at 6:05, it's not 6:05 anymore, at 6:06 I'm going to open the floor for public input. If there were members of the public, well, there are members of the public here. They would be asked to state their name and address for the record and that input should be focused on items included in the agenda. It is not intended to be a back and forth discussion, but rather an opportunity for the board to hear from residents before acting on agenda items. The floor will be open for public input for half an hour, 30 minutes, so we will close at 6:36. If this meeting adjourns prior to that, then we're going to adjourn. So, tonight's discussion is the bond resolution for anyone in the public who would like to speak. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Seeing none, we will move forward with our agenda. Again, the floor will remain open until 6:36. So, discussion. Hold on one second. So, we have a co-op bond resolution on our agenda for discussion. I'm going to kind of like turn the floor over to the Superintendent-elect and to members of the Facilities Committee, just to kind of give us whatever background we need before making, moving on to the deliberative item.
Okay, so in the board packet, there's the loan agreement and the bond resolution. So, tonight, we are looking for action regarding the loan agreement and bond resolution to be able to move forward with them. So, I will share some backstory. In our March meeting, we had discussed two different warrant articles. One was simply HVAC at the middle school, including removing an underground storage tank that is out of compliance. It has been out of compliance for over a year. And the proposal was to switch it to propane and, you know, create a centralized boiler plant and a number of other HVAC upgrades. At the time, the interest rate that we were quoted was 3.84 percent. Right now, we're looking at 4.23 percent. We were looking at doing that over 20 years, financing that over 20 years with a bond. The solar project, at the time, in March, we were quoted a 3.59 percent interest rate. Right now, we're looking at 3.96 percent interest rate. There, we are not expecting those rates to change drastically between now and the bond sale in July, but they, there could be a little bit of a shift. Inside, there's Exhibit A inside the documents. In the packet, it's page nine of 13 of the agenda packet, but you can see overall, it's a 20-year payoff. But years one through 15 include both the portion that's for the solar and the portion that's for the HVAC. So, the payment varies between $417,000 and change and $410,000, but essentially, it's around that $415,000 for 15 years. That's well below the target of underneath $600,000, which is what the Facilities Committee was tasked with. About $415,000. And so, we were tasked with trying to do this work within the $600,000 of the bond that is coming off the books right now. So, that is well under the $600,000. And then you can see in years 16 through 20, that principal or the payment drops to around $265,000 to $260,000 over those final five years. And so, that is when the solar is completely paid off and we're only paying for the HVAC at the middle school. So, while it was required that we bundle both of those amounts for a total of $7.5 million or so, they are still sort of broken up with different rates and different terms, in terms of the number of years, 15 years and 20 years. So, that remains the same. So, that is what we are looking at in terms of rates and length of the bond. And if we would like an update on the specifics regarding where we stand with the project.
I'm a little confused. Are these two separate bonds we're talking about?
It's a bundled bond.
Okay.
But they're...
The two elements.
The two elements are treated differently based on interest rates, if you will.
It could be many bonds. It turns out, how they choose, once they issue it, they can, the bond bank can break it up.
Can fragment it, I see.
But the payment terms are scheduled for 15 years on the amount attributable to the solar project and 20 years about attributable to the HVAC.
Got it.
That was a big clarification that we got.
Yep. So, that's what we're looking at.
So, I know there were some questions that were discussed at length at the Facilities Committee. And Tom graciously emailed a summary of those to the school board. And I think it's appropriate for the public to have an understanding of what information we've received from the Facilities Committee member, which is Tom and Rob, but we got it from Tom.
Yeah, thanks for summarizing that, by the way. That was very helpful.
Yeah, as much as anything, I wanted people to understand my skewed thought process so that the comments I make were at least in context for my way of thinking. The big issue that came forward between the time that we generated the plan and we are now facing was the reliance or counting on getting federal program rebates, which have covered 20, over 25 percent of the cost of the entire program. And based on information that had been presented in the news and things, there was concern had that money gone away. Because even though the bond and the warrant article was worded to cover the full amount without the rebates, presentation and much of the conversation with the public talked about the net cost to taxpayers since they're creating the schools. And I was wanting to understand that. So, we had a presentation from EEI, who is the consultant group with whom we're working, who will be the project leaders for the program, and they are really well-engaged with this topic. And what we learned was that there are some significant updates that have come through, particularly regarding the rebate program. And although nothing at this time is firm, we are cautiously optimistic that the current state is worst case because there is a bill that was passed from the House. My understanding is this is before the Senate. There's been some pushback from the Senate. And they don't, to try and relax some of the options. It's connected to the budget bill. And if it goes through as it's currently written, it will end the rebates, effective of the passing, but will honor the rebates for any programs that have completed at least 5 percent construction or completion by 60 days after the date that the bill is enacted.
Is signed, like signed, right, signed into law.
So, we would be grandfathered if we met those requirements?
It's not grandfathered. It's...
Safe harbor.
There is a period during which work can continue to qualify, but that timeline ends 60 days after. The current anticipated vote date is July 5th, which would bring us into September. So, the question was, can we start and be involved deeply enough in the project to ensure that we qualify?
Would the boiler work be recognized as part of that work? It's got to be particularly solar.
It's got to be the project that is being used to qualify for the rebates.
For the rebates.
The rebates are strictly around the renewable energy, in this case, solar. There's a separate window for geothermal. There's different windows. But for solar, the solar project, that would be, that deadline would be 60 days after July 5th, worst case, anticipated at this point.
If it's signed on July 5th, it could be passed by the Senate on July 5th and signed on July 6th or 7th. Like, if the President has to sign it.
Or it could be pushed back by the Senate and a vote could be months away. July 5th is the earliest that it is anticipated. And the definition of completion includes actual construction work that's been done as well as materials for the project that have been purchased and delivered on-site. So, what we would need to do is make those purchases, get the items delivered, and have any potential support work done at the high school, which is where the first element of the solar project would take place. But it covers the entire project, both the high school and the middle school.
One quick question. Sorry to interrupt you. Would the roof work at the middle school? Because it's being done so that we can move the solar onto it, would that qualify as part of the project?
No, it's not part of the funding package.
Okay.
And the rebate package for the work, yeah.
But the good news is, we have been told with no hesitation, I'll say, that that amount of completion can be achieved in that timeframe, conditioned upon the funds being made available quickly, contract being signed with EEI, and essentially as giving the green light to the work. If we delayed on that, then that could push other things out just because of lead times for items and work that needs to be done. So, the net result is that we believe that the work can be done. The second element of that is that part of the, part of the process of doing the work, actually doing the project, is getting a permit from Eversource to whom the system will be linked. We had initially talked about what's called a grid tie for net metering, and where excess, excess energy is stored back on the grid and credited to our account. The problem is, there's a four- to eight-month lead time right now on the permitting process. So, the proposed workaround for that is to have onsite storage at the, for the high school in the form of battery storage. And battery storage for a fixed facility is not like batteries in an electric car or even power wall kind of things that a lot of consumers. It's a well-established, safe, and long-life system because weight doesn't matter, physical size doesn't matter up to a point. It's just a question, there is added cost of both the battery and the controllers for it. However, Eversource, in conjunction with the state, has an ongoing incentive program for doing these kind of storage systems because it takes load off the grid. And the value of that is $200,000. So, there's a significant offset of the cost of purchasing the batteries versus just the raw cost itself. There are some other complexities, but the net result is if we used a battery system and went for permitting on that at the high school, that permitting process is a couple of weeks. It's a much more streamlined process and we could proceed through in that manner. There are some tweaks to the system. There are some options. One of the nice things about having a battery system is it can also function as backup generator. And where the existing generator in the high school is more than two decades old and would likely show up on a capital purchase program in the near future, if we had the batteries, that potentially would not have to be there. There's also an offsetting benefit of having batteries, that it has a load leveling effect that allows you to draw off your battery system during peak rate hours. And it's all computerized to manage that. But the big question that would have to get answered some point along the line is, number one, do we want to size the batteries so that we can store as much as we think we'd ever make? Or do you do it something smaller? Do we still stay in line for the grid tie and still look at that option at the high school for eight months if they'll let us have parallels? So, there are some additional options that this present. But the net result is a general impression that the system can stay the same. Same number of panels, relatively the same efficiencies throughout. The only difference is there is a little bit of incremental difference in the project cost, which would extend the break-even point of the return on investment by several months, less than a year, but several months. I think the numbers that EEI has calculated, is that correct? You have the Ben stuff right there?
No, I didn't pick it up off the printer, but...
It was, it went from nine, nine years and some odd months to 10 years or some odd months. So, that left us with the feeling that we have the ability to continue with the program and deliver, for all intents, the same functionality that was presented to the... That was really a primary concern. It does create some options and it creates some decisions. It requires that we take some action pretty quickly. But the main things that I wanted people to understand is that the change in scope, it's not really scope, but the change in detail from battery storage to grid tie, from grid tie to battery storage at the high school, not the middle school. The need to accelerate the high school work. And that means that we have to do whatever it takes to have place to put stuff this summer if they need to be pulling some electrical wires and things like that, that any summer activities be made aware of potential impact to the availability space. And to recognize that even with this, regardless of which plan, the changing landscape with regulatory issues still present some volatility to overall project elements and project costs as we move along.
We ran into the same thing at the Hollis District when we were doing the energy upgrades, where material went sky-high in obtaining it and to the point where we weren't able to complete the project as presented. You might remember that the gym was not finished for several years. That was the part where we couldn't finish.
Right.
So, this, this happens. This level of dynamics does...
Any construction project.
Yeah, you're going to run up against it. I like the idea of keeping ourselves in line for the net metering.
If they'll allow it, yeah.
Yeah, if they'll allow it. We probably should pursue the batteries. I prefer the net metering because I think it's just, although it's difficult for Eversource, I think it's a cleaner install and from an operation point of view. But I think the bottom line is, we want to get that, we want to get the high school done.
There would be nothing technically that would preclude us at any point further down the line to pursue net metering.
Net metering.
If we didn't do them in parallel.
And that was my question. Like, by putting in these batteries, does it, does it take us out of the running for getting, getting net metering at some maybe better or opportune time down the road?
No, it doesn't. What it does is it just, it just kicks that lead time issue. And that brings us, the final point is, why are we meeting tonight and why is this so urgent? And it was, I probably heard it before, but it was a reminder that the New Hampshire Bond Bank offers things twice a year. And the way that we have chosen to fund things through the bond, if we didn't do this, you know, it's bundled, we would lose, we would not have access to the funds we're counting on to do the propane conversion and the boiler work, which it's imperative that that start. We would have to then start essentially borrowing money from ourselves and stealing it from the budget, hoping, and then going back to the bond bank in January to take another cut at it or resort to commercial lenders whose current interest rates are substantially higher. At this point, I think almost two points higher. So, there is a strong motivation to act now while we can, as long as we are not jeopardizing the project or, in my opinion, altering it in such a way that it's not the project that we presented in. And I say this because I've probably been the most vocal person about objections or concerns about it. And the information that's been presented to date has satisfied my understanding from the technical standpoint of the project. The only open question that I have, and I don't know that it's, we'll sway it. One was just answered, which is, are we still in line with our goal of being at or below the bond value that's coming off? And Gina has stated clearly, we are substantially below.
Yes.
And the second question is, we had presented the solar project as essentially budget-neutral from the standpoint that once the rebates come in, the combined influx of income from that plus the savings essentially offset the costs that we will pay in the early stages of the solar program so that the next several years of budgets aren't heavily burdened by taking on this project. And do you have information on that?
So, the only information I can put to that is it really depends on when they're completed, when the projects are completed. But yes, it would still be expected to be essentially budget-neutral, but we can't say that until we have rebates.
I'm saying based on the bond cost, not...
Oh, yeah, based on the bond cost, absolutely.
Okay. Because we would have been in that same boat if we weren't making this twist.
Yeah, I think another piece of it, though, is that it's not going to look so like, now we're saving. If we offset and do the high school first and then the middle school, you know, after the middle school roof is ready for solar because, and if we wait for net metering approval, you're going to see two waves of savings in terms of energy.
I think if we were going to see that anyway, even before, just because logistically, we could get the speeding, get the high school online faster. I mean, we could have waited on the high school under the other program, but there's, there's every reason to get it done as quickly as we can.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I tend to think that as long as we are under the, that the bond coming off and what we're planning to spend, as long as we're at or around that level, and I'm very happy to hear that we're well below it, that's the key thing for me that would give, if we exceed that and start getting north of that $600, that's the piece for me that would give concern that we're not staying to the plan. How we do the project and, you know, net metering versus batteries versus, that's just part of a project. That's, I mean, maybe somebody can come and be upset at us for not doing what we said we're going to do. But it's the money that I think the more relevant and more concerning that would cause people to say, hey, what's going on? You told us X and now it's costing Y. So, that, that's what, I mean, for me, that's what I'm focused on, is where are we with these payments? And how close are we to that red zone of that $600?
And the voters supported this. I looked it up. I mean, they supported the first part 72 percent. And the second, the solar project was 67 percent, which are really significant majorities. It's good support. And I do think that someone, I know someone asked the question about the rebates and Mike did answer that there were no guarantees. And this vote was in March when there were already threats to the, I think it's the Inflation Reduction Act where the, where this, these rebates were developed. So, I think most folks in the room, given the climate in March, you know, of where we were in terms of a country and we had new administration and new ideas, that, you know, I think people were kind of aware that there could be changes in the nitty-gritty. And as long as we are putting in solar, which I think some folks voted on because they really want to see us be in a more climate-friendly type of energy. But I also think that people want to make sure that we're, that solar will pay us back. And it sounds like with the battery system, we store our own energy, which we can use. And so, it seems like to me, it's, we need to, I believe we need to support what the voters wanted, and I think they voted for this.
Agreed. And I think it's important that we secure the funding by the action of this body.
Right.
And then the other piece is having the Facilities Committee continue to monitor all the other moving parts. And not screening it for the board, but condensing it, if you will, and bringing maybe the best path forward after we've kind of looked at all these different things. Because we could spend the rest of our meetings until next January talking about facilities here.
That's why we have a Facilities Committee for you to break it all down.
We want to break it down. We'll keep an eye on the moving parts and we'll bring the best way forward and update.
And then my only question is, in terms of triggering all of this and getting this done, that the office is capable of doing that, the SAE office, if you guys are ready to go?
We're ready.
What would be the next steps after tonight if the resolution and the agreement are approved?
So, once this is approved, then we go to the official bond sale in July. But we can still trigger EEI to draw up a contract for the complete project. So, it's that contract that shows the $2.2-ish million for the solar that we need to ensure at a minimum of 5 percent in order to safe harbor the project. So, we would go ahead and get that contract, sign it, you know, now that funding would be secure. And then they can move forward with the purchasing of equipment for the high school.
Now, they, they had told us previously that the contract could be executed and initiated prior to the bonding if, as a district, we were willing to do that. Because from their standpoint, the fear risks are minimized. Do you believe that the administration and the office is willing to execute that contract before the bond sale?
Yeah, my understanding was if this passed, we would move forward with the contract.
And when's the, when's the bond?
I think it's early July.
So, we could get a couple of weeks' jumpstart on it?
That was going to be my question, as far as the rebate. When does the timeline start?
The timeline starts whenever it's signed.
But I mean, for the 60 days?
When it's signed by the President.
When the President signs the, if the law passes, that the rebates are pulled, once it's signed into law. So, the vote is...
But it takes us four weeks to get a permit and four weeks to get a battery. And if, I mean, I'm just wondering if any of that's going to delay, I mean, not the whole project, no, but for the rebate.
What EEI told us is that they can get, they can issue the purchase order and start bringing product onsite as soon as the contract is signed. They can start. And just the solar panels alone are likely to bring us to that level.
I would say a fraction of the solar panels will bring us to the 5 percent. We're looking at $100,000.
And just, yeah, just the ones for the, for the height, yeah. Their expectation is that the first thing they would do is order the solar panels and look to have them delivered. And the other is to potentially start pulling some... And the other is to potentially start pulling some wires. One of the reasons for that isn't, isn't just the rebate, it's to, to do it during the least disruptive period.
Try to get it done during the summer. Yeah, okay.
Because the roof work can be done, can actually be done during the school season. Before we found out about the rebate issue, we were talking about can we do it, get the solar panels in and up for this, um, calendar year, not, because one of the things that happens with the rebates is you can apply for the rebate after you have completed the project. When I say apply for it, I mean, apply for actually doing the payment.
Right.
So one benchmark is getting it started at 5% completion to put you, make you eligible for the rebates. You have, I think, three years to actually complete the project, but you can't ask for the money.
Until it's done.
Until after you've completed that, that portion of it.
Okay.
They can break the project up from a rebate standpoint between the buildings, but from a, from a, a bonding and, uh, bonding process and the total dollar amount of the project is all being considered one. So the qualifying, we're getting 5% of the high school and the middle school, not just the high school.
It will be okay. So, um, is everyone comfortable with me moving forward to deliberative deliberations? Cause I have to...
You can close public input.
Oh, thank you. Yes, and I'm closing public input at, I'm, is it okay to close public input? Okay. Closing public input at 6:37. All right, so I have to read the resolution into the record and then there'll be a motion after that. So before I do that...
No last comment?
Sure, cause I just want to get it all done, cause I'm gonna read this, make the motion, and I'm not reading this if you're, if we're gonna, this is gonna fail, so.
There has been some feedback that seems to have some misunderstanding of wording in the information that's been presented when they talk about break even. And when we talk, break even has, has been used to describe the point at which the amount of savings has fully offset the cost of the project. After that point, it, the savings are now true savings and surplus. Some, um, some, some people have misunderstood break even meaning you hit break even, it's neutral. No, this, the, I don't know so much about what the, what the status will be, whether projections have been done on the HVAC stuff, but on solar, um, once we hit break even, we were projected over the expected life of the, the panels to have over a million dollars of surplus through energy savings. And that's conservatively using current energy.
Right, right. Yeah, and I think it was very clear that the break even point was an estimate at the March meeting and, um...
And very conservative because I think it was a static, a static number carried forward and it wasn't handling, you know, changes and, and, you know.
I think voters were aware that that was an estimate. I think voters were aware that the rebates were not 100% guaranteed, so I feel really comfortable in supporting this. So can I read this? Can I go? Okay.
All right, can you?
May I read it? Okay, so I need to read this into the record. Resolution to authorize 7,507,355 bond bank loan agreement and issuance of bond for installation of energy conservation equipment at district schools. The School Board of Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District, the district hereby resolves as follows. One, that pursuant to the Municipal Finance Act RSA Chapter 33, the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank Law RSA Chapter 35-A, all their applicable law and approval of the voters of the District of Warrant, Articles 1 and 2 at the annual school meeting held March 4th, 2025 collectively, the authorizations. The Treasurer and the Chair of the School Board of the District are authorized to execute a test and deliver a loan agreement between the District and the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank, hereby called the Bond Bank, substantially in the form presented to this meeting with such changes not inconsistent with this resolution as the Treasurer and member of the School Board may approve. Said approval to be conclusively evidenced by the execution and delivery thereof, the loan agreement, to effect a borrowing from the Bond Bank in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed 7,507,355 to finance costs for the design, acquisition, and installation of energy conservation equipment, HBMs, boilers, controls, LED lighting, and other end-of-life rooftop units, and related building improvements at Hollis Brookline Middle School in the principal amount of 5,291,200. The middle school project and the design, acquisition, and installation of energy conservation equipment, solar panels, and related building improvements at the Hollis Brookline Middle School and Hollis High, Hollis High School, it says here, in the principal amount of The solar panel project collectively, the project. That the expected useful life of the solar panel project is determined to be not less than 15 years, and the expected useful life of the middle school project is determined to be not less than 20 years. That pursuant to the terms of the loan agreement and authorizations, the district is authorized to borrow from the Bond Bank a sum of up to 7,507,355. And to evidence such indebtedness, the Treasurer and majority of the School Board are authorized to issue a general obligation bond of the district in an original principal amount of up to 7,507,355, the bond, and to pledge the full faith and credit of the district in payment of the bond. Four, that the bond shall be dated on or about August 14th, 2025, shall mature in accordance with the schedule set forth in Exhibit A of the loan agreement, and shall bear an interest cost rate as defined in the loan agreement or such lesser interest cost rate as may be determined by the Bond Bank. Five, that the bond shall be signed by a majority of the School Board and countersigned by the Treasurer and be in such form as the signatories may approve. Said approvals to be conclusively evidenced by the execution and delivery thereof. Six, that the district does not have an official seal. Seven, that the bond shall be sold to the Bond Bank at no less than par plus any applicable premium, and that pursuant to RSA 35-A colon 29, the Treasurer may apply any premium received by the district on account of issuance to the bond. I, one, I guess, to the payment of the cost of preparing, issuing, and marketing the issuance of the bond. Two, to the cost of the project. Three, to deposit in the general fund of the district and to be available, to be appropriated for any lawful purpose of the district. Or, four, to any combination of the foregoing. That neither, eight, that neither the proceeds of the bond nor the project sell used in any manner that would cause the bond to be arbitrage, arbitrage bond or a privately, a private activity bond within the meaning of Sections 148 and 141 of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended the code. That in connect, nine, that in connection with the bond, the Treasurer is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the district an arbitrage and use of proceeds certificate in form approved by the district's bond council, and to covenant on behalf of the district to file any information report and pay any rebate due to the United States in connection with the issuance of the bond, and to take all other lawful actions necessary to ensure that the interests of the bond will be excludable from the gross income of the owners thereof for purposes of federal income taxation and refrain from taking any action which would cause interest on the bond to become includeable in the gross income of the owners thereof. Ten, that the Treasurer and the business administrator acting singly is authorized in consultation with bond council to implement written procedures with respect to the bond for the purpose of, one, ensuring timely remedial action for any portion of the bond that may become non-qualified bonds, as those terms are defined in the code and regulations they are under, and two, monitoring the district's compliance following the issuance of the bond with the arbitrage yield restriction and rebate requirements of the code and regulations they are under. Eleven, that the Treasurer and the proper officials of the district acting singly are authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the district such other documents and certificates, including such documents and certificates as may be required by bond council or the Bond Bank, and to do or cause to be done all such acts and things as may be necessary or desirable in order to effect the transactions herein, authorized, and any such prior action by them is hereby ratified and confirmed. Twelve, that the Treasurer, Chair of the School Board, or District Clerk, for any kind of reason are unavailable to, as applicable, approve, execute, or attest to the bond, the bond, or any related financing documents, the person or persons then acting in any such capacity, whether an assistant, deputy, or otherwise us authorized to act for unavailable official with the same, with the same force and effect as if such official had himself, herself performed such act. Thirteen, that any of the officers or officials of the district who have signed or attested the bond shall cease to be such officers or officials before the bond so signed and attested shall have been actually authenticated or delivered by the district. Such bond nevertheless may be authenticated, delivered, and is issued with the same force and effect as though the person or persons who signed or attested the bond had not ceased to be such officer, official. And also, any such bond may be signed or attested on behalf of the district by those persons who, at the actual date of the execution of the bond, shall be the proper officers and officials of the district, although at the nominal date of the bond, any such person shall not have been such official or officer or official. Fourteen, that the district hereby resolves and declares its official intent pursuant to Section 1 dot 150 dash 2E, the Treasury Regulations, that the district reasonably expects to use the proceeds of the bond to reimburse certain original expenditures from the district's general reserve or other fund paid not earlier than 60 days prior to the adoption of this resolution or to be paid, which original expenditures have been or will be incurred in connection with the cost of the project, and that the district reasonably expects the maximum aggregate principal amount that the district will issue to finance the project is 7,507,355. And fifteen, that the clerk include and attested copy of this resolution and certificate of vote with the minutes of this meeting.
Well done.
Thank you. Arbitrage, what's that word?
Arbitrage.
Thank you. I knew I was saying that one wrong.
I don't know what it means. They use it a lot for finance.
Not a finance girl. So I need a motion. I, I was like, what is that word? Okay. Motion by a member that the resolution entitled, quote, "Resolution to authorize 7,507,355 Bond Bank Loan Agreement and Issuance of Bond for Installation of Energy Conservation Equipment at District Schools," un, end quote, be approved in form presented to this meeting, and that an attested copy of said resolution be included with the minutes of this meeting.
Seven.
Moved by Cindy.
Second.
Second by Rob. Is there any further comments or discussion?
The, one of the stipulations near the end said that 7 million blah 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 fully encompassed the project.
Item number 14? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, district resents the maximum aggregate principal amount district will issue to finance. Does that restrict us if costs go up?
Yeah, well, we get 7,507,355.
No, but can we use our own money to pay additional amounts on the same project?
No. I mean, we can use our mon, yes. And it also answers your question from earlier. It's saying that it can be used to pay anything that we've already paid for 60 days prior to today, assuming we approve it. So, so we can front money from the general fund and reimburse, reimburse, yeah.
And then the second question is, is there, is there anything that restricts us, since we're doing this in phases, when we get all the money and we start paying interest on it right away, is there anything that restricts us from holding the unexpended funds in interest-bearing accounts?
No.
Okay. So it's, it's only, only limited by our inter, our own policy regarding investments, right?
Mm-hmm.
Great. Any other questions? Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Zero. Five, zero, motion carries. Okay, so at this time, I, is there anything else? No, okay. Is this time I take a motion to adjourn?
No, don't we have to approve the, I thought, is it agreement? Do we approve both documents at the same time?
I am, I am going off the outline by Dawn.
I thought that we had to approve the resolution and agreement.
No, she just has the one thing.
Yeah, she has one motion.
Wouldn't hurt to do it.
So what do you want to approve?
The agreement.
I do have to read that into the record?
No.
Dear God. Cause almost none.
Resolution references the loan agreement? I think we have to decide if it's, if it's specific enough that we don't need to do the loan agreement separately, like it does the resolution.
I, I thought we did, the way it was distributed, I thought it was two separate documents.
Yeah, so it looked as though, yes, I agree with you, but the motion is resolution to authorize the agreement and issuance of a bond. So I feel like the motion captures both.
Yeah, cause it has the Bond Bank Loan Agreement and the issuance of the bond.
Okay, just, I just don't want us to...
Do you want, how about we just, how about we approve this? We did that. Would you, would somebody like to make a motion to, what, what, what is it called?
To approve the loan agreement.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the co-op loan agreement for the bond?
I'll make a motion to approve the co-op bond agreement.
Second?
Second.
Okay, does that work?
Discussion.
I think that works. I mean, it's a motion.
I, I'm not, I'm not the one bothered by it. I just, I had expected there to be, have to be two motions.
I don't think it hurts to do that, too.
We just did it, so, so, you know. All those in favor? Okay, five, zero, motion carries. Now can I take a motion to adjourn? May I? May I have one?
Motion to adjourn.
This is moved by Rob.
Non-batable.
Second?
Second.
Second by Cindy. All those in favor? Five, zero, motion carries. We are adjourned at six...
51.
51.